Let me get my stuff ready. This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. We do have the presence of a quorum. The meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in time and the time and manner required. As we do with every meeting, we'll start off with a brief prayer and I get to do that tonight and the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the opportunity to meet in this great town, in this great state, in this great country we live in, God. Thank you for the ability to speak freely, speak freely about so many things and about you, God. And as the holidays are upon us, we just thank you for everything that that means to us, God. We know that this time of year can be challenging for some people. There's a lot of, you know, missing family and just scars that kind of get scratched a little bit, God. So we pray that forever is going through that. You just give them peace because that is what we're celebrating, God. We are celebrating the delivery of the Prince of Peace. And I pray in this world where things are going wild that your peace will come upon it and specifically, Lord, be with everybody in this room and everybody in Tyler ISD. We pray over this break that our staff and students are safe, re-energized, God, and that they'll just hold on for one more week as we finish out the semester strong. It's in your Son, my Savior's name, Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the people of Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Okay, and we, Dr. Crawford, we do have action coming out of executive session, correct?
It's correct.
Yes. And I'll, for whoever's willing, entertain a motion on the item that we do have regarding the Chapter 21 probationary employment of Neva Smith.
Mr. President, I move to terminate the following employee under a 21 probationary contract for job abandonment, Neva Smith.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Okay, best part of the meeting, we have special recognitions. That can't be what everybody's here for.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Crawford. We want to begin the special recognition part of our board meeting tonight by announcing our December District Student of the Month. The Elementary Student of the Month is Lakaria Rose, a fourth grade student at Clarkston Elementary School. And the Secondary Student of the Month is Rosio Rico, a senior at Bosher Center for Exceptional Progress. And at this time, you may please join me in looking at a wonderful video about these two outstanding students.
Student success can be achieved in a variety of ways, and it's a journey that looks different for every learner. In Tyler ISD, we witness the remarkable transformation of young lives every day. Let's take this moment to applaud their successes, share their stories, and inspire one another. Together, let's celebrate the journey of student success in Tyler ISD. Let's meet our Elementary Student of the Month for December. Lakaria is a fourth grader at Clarkston Elementary School. She has a kind and helpful heart and goes the extra mile to make sure her classmates get help when they need it.
In our classroom, we are one. It's like a bond, because even though we might not like each other at some times, we're family. And everybody helps family. So in my class, I love helping people because if we're a classroom family, I want us to all be successful.
Lakaria's fourth grade teacher, Monique Hawkins, says her willingness to help her teachers and classmates makes her an all-around great student.
I could count on her for any and everything. Like she's, she's helped me decorate, she's helped me do anything that I've even asked her to do. Very respectful, she's very respectful. Just a great kid.
Now let's recognize our district secondary student of the month.
My name is Rosio.
Rosio's journey is a success story of persistence and adaptive learning. Through the use of a voice output device, Rosio has been empowered to communicate more independently, unlocking new opportunities for leadership and connection with those around her.
Over the course of the last two years, we've started using her teaching her picture symbols and the use of an iPad to communicate basic information such as her name, address, and phone number, information that if something was to happen, she would need to, to be able to convey to people.
Introducing herself through the device, she proceeds to offer snacks to different classes, informing her peers of the prices when asked. Her ability to take charge of the mobile snack cart demonstrates her adaptability and willingness to take on new challenges with confidence. She is also an active participant in work-based learning, where she learns and demonstrates her skills in completing tasks in local community businesses.
Is there anything else you would like to say about being recognized for Student of the Month? Well, what would you like to say?
Merry Christmas.
Let's honor these remarkable students as we acknowledge the outstanding achievements happening throughout our district. This recognition is brought to you by Krista's Trinity Mother Frances Health System.
It's showing it's on. Okay. Now everybody can hear me. Okay, now for the good part. We're going to now welcome Lakaria to the front to receive her Elementary Student of the Month award. Come on down. And next, we would like to recognize our secondary student of the month. Rosio, come on down.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Next, we would like to recognize the two students whose artwork was selected for the 2024 District Christmas Card. Actually, we're going to come back to that one. Next, we're going to go to our Teachers of the Month. Our district teachers of the month for December at the elementary school level is pre-K teacher at Birdwell Dual Language Immersion School, Laura Poujol. And here are a few comments from her principal. As a visiting international teacher, Ms. Poujol brings amazing cultural experiences to her students and the campus. Her classroom has a positive vibe and her students and parents have positive things to say about her. She is also a positive influence on her team, sharing her cultural experiences that have spread on campus, and she has become a grade-level experience for all of the students, such as stomping of the grapes to make grape juice. Parents love these types of cultural activities as part of their dual-language experience, and she is super creative at sharing other Spanish cultures with our families. She is also an amazing mentor and connects with new teachers from Spain in order to support their integration efforts into Tyler. Come on down, Laura. Congratulations. Let's give everyone one more round of applause. Our secondary teacher of the month is Shavante Goss, a social studies teacher at Hubbard Middle School. And here are a few comments from his principal. Mr. Goss has continually impressed the leadership team with his ability to motivate students, provide engaging instruction, and continuously seek feedback from other educators. He has some of the strongest student relationships on our campus and is always genuinely concerned about his students. Having formerly served as the ISS teacher at Hubbard, he pursued his teaching certification, which has been a wonderful addition to Hubbard's teaching capacity. Mr. Goss is known for his humility, and when recognized, he would probably say, somebody else deserves it. Mr. Goss, you deserve it. Come on up. You gotta love the T-shirts they made for you. That's awesome. Okay, let's give them one more round of applause. And now we're going to recognize the two students whose artwork was selected for the 2024 Christmas Card for the district. Trayvon Reed, a ninth grade student at Tyler High School, and Hannah Dampf, a ninth grader at Tyler Legacy High School. And I believe Hannah is the only one here tonight, so if Hannah, you want to come on up and get your certificate? We would also like to make an honorable mention for the students whose artwork was selected to hang in the boardroom for the month of December. And you can see all of those over there. Let's give her one more round of applause. And our honorable mentions are Maya Ziegler, Nativity Christmas, from Tyler Legacy; Yolania Mendez, Christmas at the Rose Garden, Tyler High; Nina Mickelson, 'Tis the Season, Caldwell Arts Academy; Kaylee Ivy, Welcome wreath, Three Lakes Middle School; JD and Goss, Welcome to Tyler, Caldwell Arts Academy; Tessa Jenkins, Courthouse Snow Globe, Caldwell Arts Academy; and Nalania Mata, Season Greetings, Caldwell Arts Academy. And they all are over here, if you would like to take a look at those later. And that concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, as we file out, we'll go ahead and do public participation, although there are no public participants this evening. So as, as we move on down the agenda, we do have a hearing, a public hearing on the 2024 School Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, other, also known as FIRST. So it's our district status for the 2022-2023 school year.
Coming to the presentation table is the Deputy Superintendent of Financial Services, Tasha Bjork. Tasha, this is your last FIRST.
Last FIRST.
It's your last FIRST presentation, so we're going to go ahead and let you give us the good news. I think we provided a little bit of preview to the board in an earlier messaging, but let's get on with our work.
Good evening. As you know, this presentation is data that's 15 months old, so we'll just go through it pretty quickly. We're required to present it. The first six indicators, you either pass or fail. You have to say yes to pretty much all of them, or else you can get substandard achievement or fail. But it's, the first one is, was the report that we, our audit filed on time, and it was. Did we have an unmodified opinion in the annual financial report from the auditors, the external auditors? And we did. And we were in compliance with all payment terms of debt agreements. And we made timely payments to Teacher Retirement System, Texas Workforce IRS, and other government agencies. And our unrestricted net position in the government activities was greater than zero. And then, basically, did our fund balance not decrease, or did it exceed 75 days of operational expenditures? And we have a three-month reserve, so we're good there. Now, the next few, we have 11 that are graded by points. And the first one is the number of days of cash on hand and current investments in the general fund to cover operating expenses. And we have 160%, and to get the 10 points, we needed greater than 90. The measure of current assets to current liabilities ratio is greater than three. We're at 4.3, so we got the full 10 points. Our general fund revenues equal our seed expenditures, and so we got the full 10 points on that. And did the school district average less than a 10% variance when comparing budgeted revenues to actual? This one's not being scored for 22-23. They've had this, they've had it out for about two or three years, but I suspect it'll be back in next year. The ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets for the school district is 60.4. This is the only one where we got a couple of points taken off, but we're almost below that 60%. So we went from 64 down to 60.4. So we're close to getting the full 10 points on that. The correlation between future debt requirements and the assessed property value, you have to be less than four, and this year we dropped down below four to 3.71, so we received the full 10 points this year. And this is our admin cost ratio, and this is like our central office personnel, and we're way below the standard of 8.55%. We're at 5.79%.
Tasha, so we're below the standard?
Yes, way.
Like again, right? 17th year in a row?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to emphasize that.
In the long term, the only reason we're above the threshold on the long-term stuff was because of bonds.
Exactly.
We rebuilt our entire district.
And as we pay it off, that's why that one dropped down, because as we pay it off, it'll get lower and lower. This one, the, the district not have a 15% decline in the students-to-staff ratio over three years, and we did not. And this one again is not being scored, but it will be next year. And they compare our PIMS data that we submit to our annual financial report, and there should be no more than 3% variance, and we got the full points on that. And then, again, some yes, no, and these relate to the external auditors' report. We were free of any instances of material weakness in internal controls. We were free of any instances of material noncompliance for the grants, contracts, and laws. And did the district post required financial information on its website with all the regulations we have? And we did. And did the school board members discuss the district's property values at a board meeting within 20 days before the district adopted its budget? Yes, we discussed that in May, April, May. So for 22-23, we met all 11 indicators and got 98 points out of 100, and yes to all the other indicators. And last year, we had 96, so we went up a couple of points, so we had superior to. These are just some other things we're required to go over. The superintendent's contract is on our website. We're required to show expenses for both board members and the superintendent. And then, did the superintendent receive any other compensation? No. And did either the superintendent or board members receive any gifts that meet that long criteria up there? And the answer is no. And none of the board members serving were a partner, stockholder, executive officer of a company we transacted business with. And then these, for some reason, they have us show the first quarter of the next year, and these are just the first quarter expenditures for '23-'24.
That's a year-old data right there.
And these are just solvency questions, and we're obviously solvent on these, so it's just, they're, all the answers are no on these. And then the super, how many superintendents last five years, and how many business managers the last five years? That's just one. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments?
Before, before you leave, tap into your expertise right here with the current, there's a couple, three items on here that you talked about, you didn't get graded on back then, but it's going to start coming back. How concerned are you with some of those things they're going to start bringing back at us, understanding what inflation looks like, what the current state of school finance looks like, and how nervous we are about that? Do you think that maybe not Tyler, and we'll try to do what we can to prevent us from being knocked down a grade or two, but is there some concern there that there's, it's going to get difficult?
I don't think so.
More difficult? Okay, okay. All right, Casey, did you hear that? She said, no, it's not going to get more difficult, so.
I mean, if they start changing indicators, it could, but with the existing ones?
You think if things stay constant?
Ones we did not get graded on, we were fine. I mean, I looked at them, so. If, you know, but they could add some that might make it difficult.
What about, as we prepare for future budgets, if the legislature decides that they're going to doze it, and they're just going to go on efficiencies, and they're just going to tell y'all, tell us, tell us to go, go find more efficiencies if you want to give your teachers pay raises, or we're going to rely upon teacher incentive a lot, got to go internally to go give a bump? And we start messing with those administr, those not administrative, but the teacher-to-student ratios? Are you concerned about that at all, that that might be in our future?
We have room, we're low on, we're at the bottom end of student-teacher ratio in the state, like.
So we could, student-teacher ratio could actually go up?
Mm-hmm.
And you feel like we wouldn't hit any type of ceiling on there, or any, or go, go I guess some folks, they want you to have, to manage your budget more effectively. If you have too small a class sizes, you get penalized on that too? Is that correct?
Well, we are at the smallest class sizes right now. That's what I mean, when our ratio's low?
Yeah, okay.
When it goes higher, that means you have a bigger class size.
Okay.
So that's overall, though.
But bigger class sizes, would you actually be rewarded for this in FIRST, or would you get penalized?
It's not really an indicator. It used to be.
Okay.
But they could bring it back, and we would not get all the points on that, because we dropped down, for '23-'24, we dropped under what their ratios used to be.
And I guess that was.
Like it was seven?
Yeah.
And we're at 6.9.
And that would show that we're not efficient enough?
We have more teachers per student than other districts our size.
Okay. And less administrative spend than districts our size.
Right, yes.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay, thank you. Thank you for your report. We do have an opportunity for public or board comments, but, so the board has had our opportunity. Does anybody from the public want to comment on the FIRST report? Okay, thank you. We'll move on down to the approval of minutes for a board workshop on November 4th and a regular meeting on November 18th. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the November 4th and 18th meeting.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Okay, on the business legal finance consent agenda, we will pull item B, as we always do. And I'll go ahead and entertain a motion then on items A through G, with the exception of B.
I move we approve items A through G minus B.
All right.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it, the motion carries. Okay, gifts and donations.
It's always fun to introduce, very enjoyable, celebrating the benevolent community that we have here in Tyler, Texas, towards our schools. And tonight, we're, we're pleased to bring in front of the board the, the consideration of $24,895 from the East Texas Communities Foundation for improvements to the Birdwell School Auditorium. Mr. Loper's there in the back, he might could tell you what those improvements could be. There's Mr. Ronho back there in the back, and they're both holding up the back wall. But we certainly, if you haven't been in the Birdwell Auditorium in a while, it's such a special place with the pressed ceiling that they have there. Look at Mr. Loper walking up here. Couldn't resist the chance to actually talk to the board about this, but we want to preserve some of these awesome facilities that we have that are ancient, so ancient that Mr. Loper actually went to school where that auditorium is located.
Very fond memories of that auditorium.
Yeah, there you go.
Did the Mexican hat dance with Amy Bridges on that stage? Yeah. So it was nice.
Well, what do you have planned for that, Mr. Loper?
What we have planned is, Mina came to us, and there's about three phases that she wanted to do, but the biggest priority is the audio system. So we're completely upgrading the entire audio. So we're completely upgrading the entire audio system. You know, it's, and it needs it. So sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. We've worked on it several times, so that's the first plan. The next one is the audiovisual system in that. And fortunately, she has this foundation that are dedicated to Birdwell, and she approached us to look and review. We got, we went over with a couple of contractors, had help with our technology department also as far as making sure that we get what their money's worth. And it's a good system, and it's much needed.
When's the last time that auditorium was...
Back when we remodeled it.
Was that when you first got here?
Yes, that was, well, no, we remodeled it again when we did, we did Birdwell, Dixie, and that was in the 2013...
2014, 13 bond.
13 bond. We actually had enough money left over in that bond to add those two campuses, and that was where we put the ceiling in and all, tried to preserve the heritage in the time...
That's great. You got that done before I got here. It must have been right before I got here, because...
Probably was, yeah. Because I met you at Dixie.
That's right. Pistachio-colored walls.
Yeah. Anyway. Any other questions?
I do not. Does anybody else have any questions? As always, it's, you never know when you, when you open up an agenda and you look at the common item B for gifts and donations, you never know where it'll be coming from. There are some frequent flyers, obviously, around here, but you really, what a special place to live, where people are just pouring into their local hometown school districts. So, now, East Texas Communities Foundation is one of those, and we do appreciate them and are very honored. I'll entertain a motion to accept this. So moved. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you, East Texas Communities Foundation, and congratulations, Birdwell. Okay, we have the consent agenda for curriculum instruction. District calendar, 2025 and 2026 is on there, and then the calendar for both years, same thing. Dr. Crawford, any comments regarding these two items?
Yes, I'm going to roll down this list with no commentary. Again, just want to remind everyone, our goals are to finish before Memorial Day. That's been a big thing for our staff, our students, and our parents. Try to start as late as we possibly can. You know, mid-August or later. And, are we really? And then also making sure that we protect some of the holidays that we think are valuable to our families around here in Tyler, and that's Thanksgiving, Christmas, spring break, Good Friday. Remember, Good Friday used to be a bad weather day, and all the stress was put on the superintendent to make sure we went to school and the roads were slick. So, let me go down this list. Again, with those things that we're trying to preserve, we're pretty set and locked in on the calendar. These are some of the comments that we had. Looks good, had 65 comments. Later start date, 24 comments. Longer fall break, 21 comments. Early release before Thanksgiving and spring break, that's 15, but y'all know that those early-release days get blown up in the mall, especially around the Legacy, Hubbard, and Rice area. Can't stand when we do early release. Later spring break, after payday. Again, we're kind of a little bit of a prisoner to when TJC wants to take their break, just for the dual-credit students that we have, and it's a large group of students that we need to try to take care of. 12 people wanted four-day weeks. Start school on Tuesday, so teachers do not have to return after Memorial Day for one day. That's some, a workday that's programmed in there. That would mean that we don't start on the Wednesday of school, the first week of school, which this board talked about, that y'all thought that that was valuable for our students and our staff to do so. Some folks wanted to actually start on that Tuesday, so they had to come back after Memorial Day for a week, a workday. Three-day weekends, if you ever have any, on a Monday instead of a Friday, because so many Friday activities for kids and staff. No homecoming on October 10th, please, is what they said. Four-day weekend. Again, we try to win football games on homecoming weekend. It's, as far as the calendar goes, that has no impact on when homecoming is determined, especially when you're struggling to try to get as many wins as you possibly can. Make teacher PD days on Fridays instead of other days. I guess Mondays maybe. Less training days in August. We've really cut back on those, haven't we, Dr. Norman, Dr. Groppel? We used to have a bunch, so I guess the people that are common on this probably don't want any at all, right? Probably some of your veteran teachers that have taken bloodborne pathogen for the 30th year in a row, like myself. Region VII schools on the same calendar? There's 180 regional, Region VII school districts, so that would probably have to be statutory. Other comments, align PD with President's Day. It's helps parents that have that holiday off. We need more PD days allotted for Mandatory Texas Reading Academy, and this was a good one, affecting a small group of students. Take every Friday of the Rose Festival off instead of the Friday before for fall. And those are your comments for the calendar, and that is being presented to y'all for action.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then, or comments on both of these items. Actually, we'll take the first one, district calendar. I'll entertain a motion on that one.
Motion to approve the district calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it, and the motion carries. So the district calendar is approved. What about both years' center?
Motion to approve both years' calendar.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you. We have future business on January 23rd, a regular meeting, and that will be in the year of 2025. So, and it is a Thursday, apparently, my dad's birthday, so, okay. Okay. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion carries, and this meeting is adjourned.